We're going to call this budget meeting to order. This is Tuesday, February 2nd, and it is 3:30. I'm going to... City manager, you got a... Do you have a game plan on how you want to do this?
No, not really. The departments have presented their portions of the budget, gone over the key things that they're looking at accomplishing over the course of this next year and the context of also the things, projects that they're looking at in the five-year CIP plan. This is set up the way that not necessarily quite everything that departments had originally requested, but it was what we could work within finances to make a budget work that allowed us to eliminate deficits, get to the 15% cash balance target over the next... through 2021. Not...
Could you please?
Not violate our usage of debt beyond that 70% of debt capacity and maintaining existing property taxes. It's a sound budget as-is. Now, it's just a question of, do you have questions about things? So, you want to see things in different priorities from what's been presented to you?
Okay.
And that's more of an interplay between this group here as to if you want more information on a given topic or you want to see the... Think through some what-ifs about what you may, as a group, be willing to look at doing.
Okay. Before we really delve into this, are there any department heads here that need to clarify anything before we get started? I'm sure we'll, as we go through this, we'll have some back-and-forth dialogue. So, let's just jump right in and let's take it as it pops. So, if anybody...
Want me to start?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think, looking at the beginning of this process, one goal was to put together a budget that would result in no tax increase. And I think that was a critical issue and one that has been met based on the proposal before us. I also think that the department heads and the city manager have put together detailed programs in this budget that I find no fault with. I mean, I think the fact that we're still not able to do everything we'd like to do because of our financial situation, there probably are things that people would like to see done that we're not going to do in this budget. However, I think continuing to reduce the debt, keep taxes where they are, that's a major goal, and we're accomplishing that. So, as far as I'm concerned, I have no further comment. I mean, I'm happy with what I've seen presented, and I'm ready to vote on that basis. End of speech.
Man, that was short and sweet, just like you, Bob.
Good speech.
Just since we started with Bob, Mayor Pro Temp, do you have...
That has been my goal since we hired this gentleman to come here, is to get back into reasonable balance. And I like that we're still headed that direction. I don't want to see us move away from that. We're... Looks like we're clearing up another $437,000. Does that sound right, Jim, for the... In the next year coming up?
Probably pretty close.
And that's a good thing. Another thing that I looked at was the goals that we set back in April of last year. And we've checked off a pretty good chunk of those as we've come through this year already. With the new police station and the... We increased the police department funding. We have... We're working on the dilapidated buildings. We've got the Manor project under control, it looks like. We've done a downtown parking study, or it's in the progress. One thing that we do have listed as an ongoing is a review of current and alternative ordinances, codes, policies, programs regarding code enforcement, property maintenance, housing, nuisance, garbage, trash, right-of-way, which I think still is... Should be one of our concerns. So, overall, it looks to me like we're making good progress. And I have no suggestions on something I'd like to change, although I'm open to listening to what anybody else might have to say. And I can reserve any other thoughts for that.
Okay. We'll just go right down the road. Starting off, I've got some, but I'll wait and see kind of where this goes. First, I do want to say that I am satisfied with the fact that I thought every department had turned in responsible budgets, and I didn't think anybody was out of line. So, I do appreciate that. One area that I still do... I won't say that I have an issue with it, but I do have a concern with is the police My only thought was, since we had... Since we came up with a budget, I looked at it from the viewpoint of what-ifs. And the only what-if that I saw was possibly spending more money and the... And I think it... I think a sign of that was spending more money on the building and the re... What's the word I'm looking for? Somebody help me out.
Are you talking about the existing building or the new building?
The new building. Redoing the new building. Anyways, the way the budget sets right now with, was it three police office... Or three police cars and then two? Was it... I thought we'd leave it... Yeah. Chief, here was my thought.
Heard my thought.
I did. We said, "And I'm out of here."
We hear you.
I didn't even say anything yet.
That microphone's on low, actually.
Don't break it.
It just barely sits in there.
That one, you really don't have to adjust.
We can put a sign on there. If you break it, you buy it. But my only concern, Chief, was, and you can talk to me on this, is the fact that we looked at... Just a couple of years ago, we looked at the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. And in the time that it's... That has elapsed, and we've gone back to getting a budget on that, it's come out to be $2 million more around there, give or take. My thought is on the building, now that we've got that building, I want to make sure that we do this and not have... Not go over budget, but at the same time, I'm expecting to. I really am. And to have it done right, I just think too many things are going to come up. And my only thought was to keep the budget the same, but to, instead of getting the vehicles, I had a thought of maybe cutting it back one vehicle, which would be three, two, and two, or for some reason, I don't have this written down in my notes. But it was a cost savings of about $40,000 per year, and I thought maybe that money might be a little cushion for us if we run into problems on the building.
Yeah, I mean, actually, in the Capitol this year, I was asking for two squad cars at a base price of 27.6, and then one CID car. And we haven't replaced a CID car for about four years. And during my discussions, what I tried to do with the budget woes that we had, we used to always be on a three... We'd get three squad cars a year, which put us on a five-year rotation. And so, I thought, well, can we reduce that sum and work with the budget as best we can? And so, I went with three, one year, to the next, three, two, three, two, which put us on a six-year rotation. And so far, so good. Those... The newer vehicles, we got a couple of them out to 100,000 miles, but we had a couple catalytic converter minor issues. We really haven't had the issues with those that we would have with the Crown Vics around 75, 80,000. We were replacing transmissions. The interior dashes were going out on them. So, with that said, if we went to, let's say, two, two, and two every year, I mean, that puts us out on a seven-plus-year rotation. And I think, over the course of time, that's going to catch up to you. I mean, at some point, you're going to have to then go by four, or go by five even. I mean, so, that's why we were just kind of trying to spread that out. I know what you're saying about the building, and I got some of those same concerns, obviously. We're still a couple of years out, you know? So, with that in mind, I know exactly what you're saying. But I think we have tried to reduce that bare bones. I mean, when you look at our Capitol for a 43-man department, our Capitol's about, on the average, well, this year, I'm asking, it was around 117. Some years, it's 126. So, on the average, it's around 120,000 a year. So, I mean, that's... That's, I guess, what I'm trying to say, is that's as low as I've been able to get it. I mean, Tasers, for example, are $1,200 apiece. We have to put those on a rotation. And so, I'm running those out. The Tasers we have now are almost 12 years old, which was... It's no way to be. I mean, so, I've increased that to... They're on about a six-year rotation now, seven at the absolute longest. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, and I fully understand it. But at the same time, we have sincerely tried to keep this at a bare bones minimum, but to keep a fleet that is very dependable. I mean, very dependable. And with that said, there's a little caveat I'll add to that. A lady that I know you know very, very well sees us in the field all the time. And these tours brought this to light. She said, "Chief," she said, "you know, those cars always look so nice, and the guys are pressed and polished, and they look so good. And then I came down here," and she said, "this wasn't what I was expecting. I was expecting what I see, like, on TV, the CSI kind of thing." So, but with that said, the demographic or the impression that we give to the community that we are on top of our game. And I think that's huge. I think that's not only important to the general citizen, but it's extremely important to the criminal. I mean, if you read a demographic study that the FBI did on officers that were felonies killed in the line of duty, they went back... The DOJ went back and interviewed all of those criminals that committed those crimes. And the first thing they said was, is, "Well, we're going to size them up. I mean, what's their car look like? What's their equipment look like? What do they look like? Are they in shape? I'm not trying him. He looks like an ex-Marine. But, oh, no, he's... Looks like he's been here 25 years, and he's just here to draw a paycheck, and that's a guy that gets shot." So, with that said, those demographics are important as well. So, I keep that in mind as we move through the process for the safety of the officers, too. So, yeah, I get what you're saying. I see where you're coming from.
But you feel strongly that you don't... That you definitely don't want to push that any further, that you feel like that's...
Yeah, Mayor, I do. I feel like we've cut that just as deep as we can cut it. And I really, really mean that to the bottom of my heart. And it's their office. I mean, they're in that 10, 12 hours a day, every day. And the longer you keep them, the more the seats start to sag, and the seats get broken down, and, you know... I like to keep them in the best possible equipment we can afford.
And that speaks to the morale of your officers, too, then?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And with all that said, I sincerely thank the community and this council, because I do think we have some of the best of the best when it comes to equipment. And I'll absolutely say that any day of the week, and I'll sincerely thank you for that, and so would they, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Counselman Scott?
I appreciate Jim Davidson bringing up the nuisance abatements and the review of current and alternative ordinances. But I did ask specifically of the chief and the development director if they could give me an idea of what it would cost to get a better handle or more control on our use of our right-of-ways. And I guess I'm more committed to that than ever after two nights ago. I was driving down Maple Street and happened to be in front of Solder School, and there was a young lady, probably in her mid-20s, that was in an SUV and had three kids in the car. And I'm driving westbound, she's driving eastbound, and she decided she wanted my side of the street. And she pulled over, and she went clear over to the curb, but there was another car coming from behind her. I had no choice but to stop. She pulled over, and she parked on the side of the street because apparently it was the closest for her to get into the front door of the house that she was going to. And I see this type of thing all the time. And it's... And we're ignoring it. And I'm not dissing the police for it. I'm saying it hasn't been a priority, and I think it needs to be. I brought it up for the... At our goal-setting, and I've brought it up when we had our discussions. It's... I think it's serious. And people don't understand, as evidenced by the letter that we received from Angie Smith about the use of city right-of-ways. And I think a lot of us... A lot of people don't know that if we make an exception, and I think it's State Code 84, if we make an exception to allow people to use the right-of-way, then we can't deny anybody the use of the right-of-way, the way that I read the code. And I think we need to get on top of it because it's... The grass, the streetscape, looks worse all the time because of the way that it's being used. People are pulling clear up on there. There's been a car at South and Summer Street for four months that's parked between a light post and a sign with no license plates. It's parked right next to that service station, has not moved for four months. And you can't... You can't see around it sometimes. And the... You can find this in almost every corner. So, I would like to know if what, you know, to... What the chief and what Eric thinks it might cost, or the city manager, or whoever wants to answer, what it might cost to put people on board? And then also, a suggestion that we... And I mentioned this during goal-setting, too, that we cross-train our employees. We've got utility locators that are on city payroll. We've got nuisance officers, but we also have inspectors. We have a lot of police officers and firefighters and streetspeople that are out on our streets all the time. And I know they've got jobs to do, but there are some times that they can take care of an issue very, very quickly with little time and make a huge difference. I guess I'll ask the question, were you able to give it any thought?
Yeah, let me try to address that. I sure wouldn't have a number figure for you. I mean, other than our park... Our current parking enforcement's about $44,000. And I think 29.5 of that is wages and vehicles and maintenance and those things. But kind of like I said during our budget presentation, I mean, I think this is coming from a multitude of different points of discussion. And for us, working with 37 policemen, it's probably something that was the absolute lowest priority. And I do think that, over time, you're exactly right. I think that people start to take advantage of that. And with that said, we're getting up the steam, and hopefully by July, we'll be in a better position that we could prioritize a person towards helping the problem. But I don't think that that's the sole solution that law enforcement is going to solve this. I think it goes deeper than that. I think that we got a community that has four or five vehicles per family, and a lot of those houses didn't even use to have a vehicle in the day. I think we have an old, aging community, and our streets are in a position that if you got three vehicles, or two vehicles, or four vehicles, I mean, they add up on the streets. And I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I mean, do we go to a permit-type system, that you can only have so many vehicles on the street? I mean, I think it's when Eric and the crew put together the downtown survey, and I don't know the parking survey exactly where that's at or where it's going to end up, but from a comprehensive perspective, maybe we need to look at that from a community-wide perspective, and how do we start to address some of the parking right-of-way issues? Because something that I see all the time is people pulling up, and they get two of their tires over the curb in between the sidewalk. But at the same time, that's keeping them from getting their windows knocked out and their mirrors knocked off, and... But it's not the way it was designed to be. And so, I think there's a multitude of things that maybe need to happen here. But from pulling across the street, parking on the wrong side of the street, those are things that I can definitely bring up, that I can really start to help address as we get more and more policemen to do that. I mean, I was running through some of the statistics just the other day, and our abandoned vehicle toes, and I'll bring this forward in the annual report, but they're probably up 300 or 400% from the first time you came to me about this. So, we're trying. I'm just telling you, when we have 3,000 people in this community that aren't used to being in this community from Texas, Louisiana, Alabama, Mississippi, they don't park down there, I don't think, like we do. Or that's my best guess, you know? And I'm not saying that's the sole problem, Tim, but I'm saying that is a contributing factor, and I think that there's a lot of those that are going on. And it probably has been one of our lowest priorities. But with that said, I have shifted Parkings Enforcement to downtown to trying the best she can in 29 and a half hours to address this. So, with that said, your complaints are taken very, very seriously. And I understand what you're asking me, but I feel that it's my fiscal responsibility to bring a budget forward, that if it's going to be any type of increases, that comes from you collectively. That doesn't come from me. And so, with that said, if this council collectively wants to add personnel or wants to do whatever needs to be done, then so be it. But I think we can help. I think we can change our priorities. And I do think that that was the lowest level. It probably still is today. But not to say that, as we get more and more people... I mean, we used to do that. If you came in and there were six guys, you're going to do follow-up today, and you four are going to answer calls, and you're going to work traffic for us. And that's something we haven't been able to do for almost four years now, where we got four guys, you're answering calls for service, and we hope we get those done. So, I mean, with that said, I think we can have a little bit of a change in philosophy. No problems there, but I want you to be mindful that we need to balance that as well. We really do. Because some of these neighborhoods that really need a lot of help with maybe parking and nuisances, they're also neighborhoods that we need to build trust in and that we need to build rapport in, and that we need to make sure that, yeah, we got a parking violation, but is there another way maybe we can correct that? And I just ask that you be mindful of that, too, because we have fought this battle hard now, I know for sure, for three and a half years. And the last thing I want to do is lose some of that rapport as well. So, I mean, that's kind of, by all means, one, we have, and two, we can be more mindful. But as far as us structurally changing the organization of the police department with personnel, I mean, that's something that you guys would have to direct me if... I mean, that's the best I can answer it, I guess.
All right. And I bring it up because the public has been extremely supportive of public safety.
Absolutely.
And they've seen the... They've seen additional police officers and firefighters. They've supported the passage of a body. And I want to show them, and I know you do, and I'm not dissing the department or you in any way, I just want to show them a little extra on the part of the city that, you know... I'm hearing the complaints, especially since I'm bringing it up. People are not hesitant at all to stop me and say, "Yeah, Tim, that really is an issue."
Yeah, sure.
You know, I don't care what the editorial in the newspaper said. That really is an issue.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And, you know, and it's not... I know there's narrow streets, and I know sometimes people are going to have to park up on the curb. And that's not a huge complaint. But when you're on Central Street, where the street right-of-way is nearly 70-foot wide, the concrete street, and they're still parking up there?
Yeah, yeah.
Or the guy's parking right at his front door? Or they're parking across the sidewalk where people in wheelchairs, the handicap people can't get through?
Nope.
That's too much.
Yeah.
That's just not acceptable. And for me, and I'll continue to bring it up until we can find... Until we can find an answer. And I'm trying to educate the council on my position, and that, as I move through here, might make a little more sense in where I'm going with it.
Yeah, no.
Good enough.
I'll come up with some numbers somehow.
Well, it really depends on what you're wanting to talk about. Vicki's position and what she does costs for her position in the vehicle and the supplies and everything to do that costs $35,000 a year for part... For just under 30 hours a week devoted to that. Additional officer, as chief would look at, depending on what they're doing, for health insurance, it's 70,000 to 80,000 just for the officer, let alone the equipment that goes with that.
Well, again, it's not a police department issue. It's a citywide issue. People parking illegally is part of the issue, but the use of the right-of-way is a police department and a development department.
The development department talked. Eric, what did you look at for what you were thinking of with that?
For ours, I guess, the focus on the nuisance side of it, we've had discussion over the years, would look at like a seasonal, part-time position that made October or something a six-month position, whether that be 24, 32, whatever number of hours. Right now, again, kind of what the chief had said, the number of rentals has increased over the last few years, so their time has been devoted to that more so. But if something were devoted to more on a proactive nuisance basis, looking at that seasonal, part-time type position, whether six-month, 32 hours, I don't know, just on a wage standpoint, looking at what other positions are, probably be around $10,000 to fund that, looking at a 12, 12.50 wage. I don't know the availability or likelihood of getting someone in at that to do that type of job. We've... Nuisance was part-time in the past. We cycled through a lot of people, and that was, I think, a higher... Around that rate or a little higher at the time, five or six years ago, so... But that would be something, I guess, on our end, if we wanted more focus just on the nuisance end, looking at a seasonal, part-time position.
Thank you. Change direction a little bit. There's plenty of things that we do as a community, that a lot of communities do, that are necessary, but... And sometimes not. We run a golf course. I wonder if it's time that we looked at a different way of operating and let the private sector take over? Sell the... Look at possibly selling the golf course or leasing the course to a private company. The profit and greed are drivers for business people and not so much for a public entity. Theirs is to do the best they can with what they've got. And I would... I'm not proposing that we do that within this budget, but that we look at that all year long as a potential for next year's budget. And in the same light, I think we should look at the Recplex in the same way. We've done that with Memorial Auditorium, and we're starting to see a little bit of progress there. You know, if that continues or not, we still need to look at the, I think, at the others.
It has merit. Sorry, that has merit.
Right. Jim, last year, you had proposed that we, you know, reduce the library budget by a sizable sum. And I had stepped up as one of the three council members that voted against that because I wanted to see another year of what they're... How they operated with, after having such a large reduction in their budget the preceding In my eyes, I've seen growth in programs and planned growth again this year, is what it looks like based on the presentations that we've had. And in business, spending money to increase sales or to increase customer activity is a good thing if there's a return on that investment. And providing library services, I think, is a very important part of the city function, but there's... I think there has to be a limit. And I think there's an opportunity to show the public that we can be a bit more conservative and still provide more of the basic library services and take another look at that budget and that proposal that you had a year ago.
I think the last time that I proposed a budget decrease was...
13.
Was two years ago. Last year, we didn't, but yes, two years ago, we looked at potentially that as one of the options when we were dealing with a shortfall, right about the time of Emerald Ashbourn, all the other things. But, yeah.
That was two years ago?
Yeah. Last year, we didn't propose any changes. We were able to maintain... We were able to maintain services.
Boy, has, uh, has your position changed because of the financial position of the city, or?
Actually, the, the, when we were doing, uh, the last time that I proposed as an option, a reduction in library services, um, was when we were, when we did have a deficit, when we, when we were short funds because of a list of different things. Emerald Ashbore, we were starting to deal with. We didn't have the funding on the franchise fee. Um, we, uh, our local office sales tax revenues were significantly lower than what had been budgeted by about five hundred thousand a year, and there are a couple of other things. And there is a list of things that we put forward to make cuts. We made some of those cuts. There were some discussions then, uh, two years ago, that was at budget time, that was three months after we did those host of cuts.
Yeah.
Um, and there were some options put out there, too, um, to, to get down to where we had a balanced budget. Last year, we didn't have to have any, anything to make a balanced budget, 'cause we, we were able to move forward with what we'd done the previous year. Now, as you have a discussion about, if you're wondering about where our library services fit, you can look at comparisons. You saw some comparisons in terms of just gross dollar, dollar amounts for communities our size, and, and we're still the top of the, of that spectrum. But that being said, you have to make a determination of what, what are the community's priorities. And if you think that the priorities need to be reallocated, that really is the, a council decision. If you think that resources should be moved from the library towards, uh, right-of-way enforcement, or, uh, whatever the, the, the cause, that's something that needs to be thought through here.
I, I, I would like to, while the library was brought up, um, I ran into somebody the other day. First off, I wanna say this, when, when looking at the budget, I think everybody probably goes into it looking at it a little bit differently, um, I always ask myself, first off, because I, I think if you just look at figures, you're not, you're, you're, you're doing the city and yourself an injustice, because not everything comes down to numbers. It, it comes down to, again, like, uh, what does, what does this service do for the city? What does it mean for the people that live there? And then I always like to make sure that I take it a step further and think, well, if I, if I needed that service, or I was in a position that I couldn't, that I didn't have, uh, internet access, I would really have to rely on the library quite a bit. Uh, actually, Rhonda, while you're here, can you, can I have you come up here for a second? If you don't mind?
I, I would just like to clarify, too, uh, where we already have made, uh, you've got your, you've got your, uh, figures in front of you, don't you?
I bet.
Uh, can you tell us where, where the budget was in, uh, two thousand and, uh, when did I get on the council? Two thousand and eleven, twelve?
I don't know if I have, um, all of it going back that far.
Oh, sure you do. I'm just playing.
If I have it with me. Um, I can, and I, and I, I didn't spend a lot of time on it when I gave my presentation, but I did include, um, a little bit of our budget history. It was fiscal year thirteen, I believe, that we made some changes in our personnel, uh, for some savings. And then it was fiscal year fourteen when we saw, um, oh, there we go. Is that better? Um, and it's fiscal year fourteen, I believe, or going into that, we had an eighty thousand dollar cut, and then a twenty thousand dollar cut. And then it was at that time that in one, it was voted on at that time to cut a hundred and forty thousand dollars from that year and the next year. So fiscal year twenty fifteen, um, the year before, they voted to do a hundred and forty thousand dollar cuts, it was in both years. So fiscal year sixteen, our current year, um, I believe is our first year that we have not had any cuts, um, in the budget.
That's, that's correct, since I've been on. I, I, I think you could look at it two ways. You know, um, with us being at the top, I think there's, there's still areas where we could probably take things from you. I have to be honest with you, I've spent more time at the library, just, just coming in and out and, and talking with people at the library, because I, I wanted to, uh, I wanted, I really wanted a better view, kind of, I guess, of, of what the library really means, and, and how important it is, and, and about these services, and if, if some of them were really needed. And I'll tell you, this isn't gonna be very popular, but, um, it's not what I'm here to be popular. I'm here to do what I think is right for the city of Burlington, and, uh, that's why we get elected, is because people believe that we will try to do what is best. And I really can't say that I have issue with the library. I, I think, uh, first off, everybody's doing a phenomenal job, but I, I think the library's needed, and I think the services that you guys have are, uh, they're awesome. You know, maybe we're at the higher of the, higher of the level because our services are just so fantastic. You've got great people that work down there. I know that, uh, there's a lot of people, and, you know, some people can look at the numbers and say, well, Burlington is this big, and these only so many people are using the services, but when you rely on those services, uh, week in and week out, um, it's paramount, it's huge. And I'll tell you, I'm, I'm satisfied with leaving the library where it's at. I, I wanted a, I wanted a budget where, uh, again, we wouldn't have to entertain any increases and taxes. I think there, we do need to, to have some exhale periods where we can sit back and, and think, how, how is this going to work going into the future? And I'm, I would still like another year, um, to, to see what does happen. So I, I just wanna say, just for me, uh, I would, I wouldn't have any issue if we, if we did not touch the library this year. Uh, I, I just want that to be said. Again, I'm, I'm open as well to anything. If the council is, uh, is, is really, uh, strong about something, then, uh, I, I trust in the council as well, and I, I definitely can bend. But I just have to say, the time that I, I do, I have to give you, I have to give you this, because I wanna, I wanna hit on a little bit everybody, but I just have to say, I, the library is just, it's fantastic. It really is, and, and unless people go down there and see how much it means to some of the people in the community, you really can't, you really can't put it into words, especially when you're looking at those figures, because when you look at 'em, just from the outside looking in, it's like, whoa, wait a minute. It, it does catch your attention. When I got on the council, the first thing I thought was, man, the library, that's just too much money. We've gotta, we've gotta get some of that money. But I just have to say, we're, you wanna talk about bang for the buck? The library, I think, is, uh, second to none, and it really means so much to a lot of people. I just wanna, I just wanna throw that out there. I, I think our library is amazing. I really do.
I agree with that, by the way. I think what impresses me also is the excellent programs you continue to run and expand, and with fewer people. I mean, you, you reduced your staff, which I know was painful, shall we say, but you got the job done, and yet I don't think the public perceived a lesser effectiveness as far as your programs. So anyway, that's the end of my talk at this time. However, I, whatever.
You reserve the right.
Yeah, I, I think I'd have to agree with, uh, the mayor. Even, I, I thought I used the library a lot, and then on our tour, it was like, oh, I've never been to this corner of the library. There's just so much there, and there's so much to offer. Um, and you guys get a lot of help. You know, there's people out there, you know, there's the grants and other donors that you have. Um, I just think it's really great what you've done. You know, you did, you did mention that you had, uh, you know, those, to me, would be big cuts, um, those past two years, and, um, I'd like to not do anything, you know, with the library's budget at this time, so.
Rhonda, can you tell me those numbers again, in what years you were talking?
Um, sure. We, there were, um, it was around fiscal year fourteen that there was an eighty thousand dollar cut, a twenty thousand dollar cut, and then there was the, the one time when they vote, voted for a hundred and forty thousand dollar cut in the current year, and then a hundred and forty thousand dollar cut in fiscal year fifteen.
And that was when we were doing the Emerald Ashbore response to that?
Right, that was done in one.
Net expenditures for the library in thirteen were one million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, and fourteen were one million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and fifteen were one million, two hundred and forty thousand. So we saw a three hundred and ten thousand dollar reduction over those two cycles, and...
This is the first year that...
This current year, it's gone up thirty thousand, which is, I think is two and a half percent, and in the proposed budget, it goes up thirty-five thousand, thirty-four thousand, which is, uh, two point eight percent, I think.
I know in my presentation, I mentioned that our fiscal year seventeen proposed budget is at the level it was in fiscal year six. Um, that was our total. I went back and looked then later, 'cause we were talking about the net effect. Um, and, um, our fiscal year seventeen, when you take, um, out revenue, um, is nine hundred and thirty-six thousand. Um, and it was actually in fiscal year two thousand was the last time that, um, our net was at that amount, or close to that amount, because our, our revenue has, um, increased in that time.
But I guess I would have to say to Councilman Scott's point, you could have a hundred thousand dollar cut to the library, and we'd still have one of the best-funded libraries on our, in our size of a community. But you gotta, it's whatever you feel is the right mixture of expenditures. I mean, it's, that's kinda hard to, there, there aren't any right or wrongs of how you spend money. It's what you can agree on about how you want to do it and what you want your community to be, so.
And I guess if I could address that comparison to the six communities in comparison to Burlington's, when you look at the level of use of those, um, the closest one, um, is Muscatine, and it's still over a hundred thousand items less a year that are circulated. Um, and like Clinton, we circulate four times the amount of materials that they, they do. And that, that's just looking at circulation, meeting room use, technology use, um, attendance at programs and things. I didn't look, um, add up all of those numbers, but we also do, uh, do more, um, or have more use than those communities. Do you have any other questions for me?
That's all I, that's all I had.
Back, back when we were first started on this, to try to get things in order, I was pushing, trying to get the council to do more cuts than what we did. And still, you know, since we were asking for a tax increase, and I, I wanted to show that we were gonna make more cuts, and, and honestly, Rhonda, the library was probably the easiest one to look at, because it's not an essential service, but it is a good service, and, and, and I like the library. But I'm not gonna push for a cut right now from the library. I, this, I've, I've thought about this a lot, Councilman Scott, and, and, um, you have to choose your battles, and, um, I'm not willing to fight this battle right now, so that's where I stand.
I can appreciate what everybody's had to say. Don't get me wrong, Rhonda, I'm not anti-library by any means. I, I'm pro-citizen. I've had a lot of citizens come to me, and they do the comparisons, and, you know, we, the, you know, if everybody was funded to the same level, maybe their numbers would be the same. Hey, the more money that you have, the more ability you have to attract customers, patrons, users, and it's, it's a good thing when you, when, when you have bottomless pockets, and you can, and you can, uh, uh, come up with, with the funding that way. It's, I, I'm, Jim said it wasn't an essential service. I think it is, because there are people in this community that can't get that type of service any other way. So it's, you know, it is important to them, but there's, I still think there's a limit on what, on what we can do, uh, as a community financially, and that's why I bring it up.
But when I mention essential service, I'm talking about what I consider the three main things that we're supposed to be doing. Police, fire, and public works, streets. So that's what I meant by essential.
Yeah, I, I, I...
And, and I wanna, I wanna say this, too. There, I had a couple people say something, are you gonna get the library? Are you gonna take something from the library? Well, I don't think we should take something from the library just to say that we did. If, if we can't, again, we can trim and trim and trim all day long, but I don't wanna do that. The only, the only time I wanna take away from something that I feel like is really being an asset and a blessing to Burlington, is if we say, if we took this away, we could drop taxes, or, you know, we could lower taxes, or we could do this, we'd have to shut you down to, to do that. And I, I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking for areas, I'm looking for, again, I just hit up Chief for, for a vehicle a year, you know what I'm saying? So I'm still looking at areas, but, um, at the same time, this is, this is one year that we're making a, that we're making a decision about for the, for the year, uh, two thousand and sixteen, and, um, I, I really would like to sit back and see, uh, what's two thousand and sixteen, uh, brings us, and, um, I'm satisfied with that. I'm satisfied with that. Does anybody have any other questions for Rhonda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't wanna bring this up, I was gonna wait till the end, but I'll just go ahead and get it out now, so I can get my two cents over and done with. You guys won't have to hear too much more from me. Uh, but there is one thing, Chief, you brought up, you said, uh, something about perception, um, how that's important, and I, I totally believe that. What I also think is important is that, uh, perception of reality, try to find some place to meet, and, uh, I just, I just wanna see the, and I'm not saying that I haven't seen it, I'm just encouraging that I, that we see in two thousand and sixteen, that same continued commitment to diversity. Uh, it seemed like we got off to a really good start. We, uh, we lost a, a fire, or a police officer, but I just, I just can't say, I can't say this enough, because I think it really, uh, it's a, it's a blessing to the community, and I think, uh, when you're dealing with a community, when you're working with a community or any group of people, one of the most important things is cooperation, and I think the more diverse you are, the more cooperation that you get in all areas. So I just, I would like to encourage all department heads, again, that, that we still continue to stay, uh, committed to, uh, diversity in all, in all areas. I have to, uh, I can't let this, uh, this budget cycle go without saying that, so. Counsel.
Uh, Jim, did you say that the, the funding was figured in for the compensation?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Councilman Wilson?
Well, I definitely think that, um, you know, the right-of-ways that we talked a little bit about, um, definitely should be, um, a higher priority, along with, you know, the nuisance. Um, and I don't, yeah, I don't know what our options are for that. I don't know if a part-time position is or ever will be feasible, that kind of thing. 'Cause if, if the people who are currently doing it are, you know, over, overloaded already as it is because of such the increase in rentals, um, you know, it's not fair to expect somebody else to do more when they're already stretched to the limit. I mean, I think a lot of people can relate to that.
As he says that, it's not just about the rentals changes over time. Uh, Eric's department did have nine individuals in it, and it now has seven. So you've gone down a couple, and his position has been combined with another department head, so you're seeing people spread in more ways than they used to, and, and I guess part of what's happened with that has meant that when it comes to the, the time available for nuisance work, it's become more of a complaint basis-driven thing, just 'cause they don't have time to focus, focus on, I mean, really devote to being proactive on things.
Right.
And as he's mentioned, the idea of having someone, uh, do this on a part-time basis, I think even to be able to throw something out there is how fe, there's a concern, how feasible is it that you can get someone who's willing to come in and do nuisance enforcement on a part-time basis, uh, for no benefits, and, uh, not a...
I don't know, I think you might actually be surprised. I find...
Well, they'd be very happy if it would happen. It's just their concern, we've, we've had it with the forestry department.
Oh, my goodness.
You, you can't find people to fill your forestry positions. Uh, this is a type of position that's one of the most negative...
Oh, yeah.
...interactions...
Yeah.
...that you can have with the public, and their concern is, even if you find the funds to do it on a part-time basis, will you really be successful? We've had some spots where that's worked out very well, and we've had other, other spots where it hasn't. So they, they just don't know, so.
First, you know, the way I look at some of this, too, uh, I keep harkening back, I guess, to the financial deficit we got ourselves into, and with Jim's guidance and others, we're coming out of that. And I can see, looking to the future, I probably won't be here, but where we'll have the, the economic base here, if you will, and the efficiency of the city, where we can have more police officers, more inspectors, and so forth. I mean, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the community grow, and when it grows, it can support more employees in our public safety empire and so forth. So when I sit here and say, I'm not gonna vote to add anybody, that doesn't mean forever, but until we get out of this hole, I guess I'm playing it tight, that's all. That pretty good speech, didn't you think?
I thought that was really nice.
You didn't say anything.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're, you're top-notch, man. There's, there's only one. Um, I, I, I wanna say, I, I do have to say this, I, I just, I want... I, I just, I want to tell the Mr. Trexel who left us. Oh, there he is.
He's got a hamstring.
I just, I just want you to send a message to your department that, just to, just to remind them that we have not forgotten about the fire department and God knows, we, we love our police department, but we love our fire department too. You guys, every time you guys go out, you're saving somebody's life or trying to. And I just think, I, I, I don't want that to get overlooked and, and, and I, I just want to, I just want to say this because it's not costing the city anything for me to say this, that, that we have not forgotten about the fire department, that we do appreciate the, the, the amount of, I, I know where your, you'd prefer to have your staff level at and it has not been there and, and by the looks of it, it's not going to be where it needs to be in your view. But I, and I know they work really hard. I just want to, I just want to send that message out to them that we appreciate them. They are, they're true heroes. They really are. And I, I think we have, I think we've got one of the best fire departments. I'll take the Pepsi Challenge, pretty much anywhere. I do. I really, I just, I just want to say that because, you know, we, we've been talking a lot about the police department because we need a police station so bad, you know, and so that's kind of overtaken everything. And I just, I just don't want the, the fire department to feel like they're, they forgot, they're forgotten. They're heroes and we appreciate them. We appreciate them. It's just, we've, we've been so, so far back behind the eight ball with the police building that we, we really, really needed to tackle that and, and that's been priority one. But we certainly appreciate you and your department.
Well, in, in the chief's time with the department, he's, I'm pretty sure you've been there long enough to see a, a major upgrade in the main fire station. You were here when the new fire station was built out at the airport, right?
Yeah.
So that's, you know, public stepped up on, for them too, so.
Thanks for saying that.
That's all I've got.
Are you guys satisfied for right now? I mean, are we, are we good to go?
I, I really, I want to continue this alternative ordinances idea. When, maybe it was three years ago, I went at the League of Cities meeting and I think it was Cedar Rapids had a presentation about their nuisance ordinance and it was really, really good. Did we ever follow up on that, Eric?
I didn't, I didn't want to call up, hey, and if we presented anything to council at the time.
I would like to see that happen. Just make some contact and find out what, knowing that if, if we look at stuff like that, it's going to have to add personnel because you can't, you can't do it. So I agree with you, Councilman Fleming. That's something that we need to look at down the road. I don't think, obviously, we can't do it this year, but I really would like to see that pursued, if that's something Mr. Scott can agree with us.
If it comes five years from now, it's better than not coming at all.
Amen to that.
That's right.
I, I'd like to see where everybody is.
I won't shut up until we-
You know we won't. God bless you. I, I'd like to see where everybody's at on us meeting back and finalizing this, that. I'd like, I, I would like tonight to digest what we had. I was, I was kind of expecting a little bit, a little bit more tonight, but let's not, let's not waste any time with this. I mean, are, are you guys ready to wrap this up? Do you want, do you want a night to di, to digest this or?
I don't.
I don't have any reason why. I mean, if you-
I, I would admit it's one of the best budgets that I've ever had the opportunity to look at. I think the staff's done a tremendous job and it's, I'm a bit conservative. I'm going to bring up every opportunity I can to try to find the ways of lowering our property taxes.
And I agree with you. And that, that was one of the first things I said to you, if you remember it, when we started talking about budget, I don't want to see a tax increase and I'd rather see one decrease. But right now, this is where we are. I do want to commend the, the department heads. Seems like back when I was on the council earlier, we never got this opportunity to hear from you like that.
Right.
And this is so much better. And this is good. And you've done a great job, so thank you. And thank you, City Manager, for orchestrating.
I just want, I just want to ask this one more time again. I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask if we have anonymity here, when can we vote then? We don't need to meet Tuesday.
No, actually, what, what our plan of action, Stephanie, you have on this next work session, setting a public hearing for consideration of the budget. That's, that would be, you would be set in a public hearing at the, on the 16th, the council meeting on the 16th for the, to be held, the hearing to be held at the March 7 council meeting where you'd approve the final budget. That March 16, setting the date for the public hearing, you're setting your expenditure levels by, by fund, by program area. And so as you're approving that, you're essentially approving the, the concept of, of what this budget is. If you're going to have any formal changes to that, you're wanting to see something that's different than how it's currently laid out, you're going to want to get that done fairly quick. You're want to have that voice set fairly soon. We, we kind of go under the assumption that you're, from this point, that, that you're okay with how it's structured.
Yes.
And we, you'll have, naturally have the, the opportunity for discussion at the work session this next week because that's one of the action items is setting that date for public hearing. So if you have some discussion continuing to, if there was something that needed to be addressed or changed, you have, you still have time this, at that work session to do it.
Very good.
But a formal decision, you kind of formally approve at this point, if your general consensus of where it's at, your, your formal approval is through the two steps, a setting the public hearing based on what we presented and then the actual approval after the public hearing. That actual approval, you, I mean, technically, you can reduce. I think we did that a couple of years ago where we had a reduction occur after the public hearing. You cannot increase expenditure in any category. Once you've set your amounts that you go for a public hearing, you've set your maximum not to exceed expenditures by budget category. But you certainly can reduce.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think we all are pretty much on the same page as, we're all happy that we're, as long as we're not saying that where there's a possibility of increase, that, that makes it a whole lot easier to, to work with. I'm, I guess I'll just let it, let it digest up until the next, to the work session and we'll, we'll see if there's anything then. But I think everybody's pretty much satisfied then?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Is, is there any department head that need, that needed to, that wanted to say anything before we close out?
Don't you dare.
They heard that. Okay. Councilman Bob, what do you think?
Well, this is a work session.
I know, but I'm still asking you, anyway.
I move that we adjourn at this time with the understanding that we can read adjourn or never-
Thank you very much for your time, everybody. Good night.